My beginning.
He moved her.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Roll call, everyone is here, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
No, B's missing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is missing.
Okay, sorry about that already. Okay, um, we're holding the meeting in compliance with the open meeting law. Is there any changes that need to be made to the agenda today? Any changes? If not, we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes to the April fourth, April nineteenth, and the special nineteenth. Could I get a motion to accept them?
Pledge of Order.
What?
Can we have the approval of the agenda?
The approval of the agenda, yeah, pass it. Okay, let's go for the approval of the agenda. I want to get out of here. Okay, okay, so approval of the agenda.
She wants to get out of here.
So, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of leave the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, agenda is approved. Then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
One moment, one moment, let's slow down just a couple seconds here.
Okay.
Who motioned to approve the agenda?
Steve.
Steve, okay.
Okay, and?
I second.
And John second.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now. Okay, how about the approval of the minutes for those three meetings?
So move for all three.
Second.
Okay, did you, did you get the motion second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the minutes are approved. Public comment, did anybody ask to speak? Okay, Tom Ackerman?
Are we all tuned on Amber?
It is now.
You got a green light?
I do. Okay, I would just like to extend an invitation to the mayor, the council, and the public to a ceremony commemorating the fortieth anniversary of a line of duty death of Gylard Mauer that occurred on May eighth of nineteen eighty-two. He passed away while serving our citizens. Gylard was a husband, a father, a teacher, a coach, and a mentor of many. He was a member of our department for eleven years. The ceremony will be held at one o'clock PM on Sunday, May eighth, at the Fire and Rescue Monument, which is located on the lakeshore just south of the visitor's center. Everybody is welcome to attend that ceremony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, well, then we're going to move on to number eight. Ron Seidel retirement presentation.
Ron, if you could walk through please.
Do you want to grab the mic, Randy?
I will.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll stand up here. That's all right, turn back on. All right, so, um, as you all know, Officer Ron Seidel retired on May first of this year. What you may not know is he actually started back in February of nineteen eighty-nine. So that actually gives Ron Seidel over thirty-three years of service and dedication to the citizens of El Goma, which is actually pretty amazing. Um, not, not trying to embarrass you, Ron, but as, as, as a coworker and had the privilege to work with you, I've, I've respected you all this time I've been here, and you will be, you will be greatly missed, and I, I can't express how, how much I'm going to miss you and how much your dedication meant to me and also to the fellow officers of the El Goma Police Department. So shake your hand real quick. So, we're going to present to you Ron with his departing gift, it's a plaque. He has an old sidebar handle, which we don't use anymore, but me and Ron are kind of old school, so he probably remembers those. A pair of old style handcuffs, and of course a little engraving saying Officer Ron Seidel, for over thirty-three years' service to, to the city of El Goma, along with our passion. So, on a grateful community, Ron, I'd present you with this shadow box.
Thank you.
You have before, from the three minutes?
Only three minutes.
Yeah, no cuts.
Come on. I guess, I'd like to thank the citizens of El Goma for allowing me to, to work for here for almost thirty-three, thirty-four years almost. Um, I thank the council, and I guess I don't really have a lot to say, um, at the moment, so. Leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Moving on to number nine, consideration of bill's claims of conference attendance. Is there any questions on any of those?
I had one question. Uh, the Marina computers. Last month, we spent eight hundred dollars for computer help, and this month, we spent eleven. What's going on with the computers at the Marina?
We had to change, so what it actually is, is that's the line item that we use, but what that is, is the mainframe that controls all the cameras down there was replaced. And Martin Security, that does all of our work for the city, we had to pay upfront their number, and that was the balance of the bill.
Okay, so it's one?
It was replacing the, so there's four cameras down there, they all come into one data bank. It was replacing that data bank.
Okay. But it's not going to be reoccurring?
That's it, the end of the bill now.
Gotcha, thank you.
Chief, you're, you've got a, you've got a bunch of, uh, analysis and evaluations listed and some psychological testing where, that's for onboarding, is that what that's for?
That's for the, uh, I read, as we, we applied, actually, we just conducted. Um, part of that is doing their background, and part of that is their testing, the psychological testing, see if they're good.
Okay, okay, all right, so that would be for part-time?
Part-time, yes.
Part-time, okay. All right, I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. And there is no one attending any conference that we need any kind of approval on, so then we're on to committee reports.
Point of contention, can I get somebody to make a motion to approve the bills?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the payment is approved. Okay, committee reports.
I move, we accept the committee reports as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, and then, old business, is there any old business? Nope. Okay, then, under new business. The meeting date and time for the finance and personnel meeting, we're asking for a change because I need to change. The typical meeting night happens to be the exact same night that the county board is, and I would not be successful trying to get nineteen county board supervisors to switch it because of my meeting, so. I would like to have it on Thursday evening, either the second or third, if that works for people.
Thursdays are terrible for me.
Thursday, okay.
Impossible, in fact, for me.
Would Mondays work?
I could work a Monday.
Work Monday.
Mondays would have to be pretty late because we have, um, CDC, library, parks, and...
Should we do it different Tuesday?
What about second, second Tuesday instead of the third?
Second Tuesday isn't enough time for bills.
Not enough time for bills, okay, what about the last Tuesday of the month, is that cutting too short?
Then it's too close also.
That's too close, okay.
Wednesdays, like Wednesday the eighteenth?
So the third Wednesday of the month is the utility meeting at five-thirty. The only person, I guess, who's on the utility that would have to go would be Lee, and then your department head was Pete, if Pete wasn't going to be there.
I can't do Wednesdays. I can do Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, does anybody have something that might be a consensus? Tuesday, the third Tuesday is the only one that I really have no way of changing. The other dates I can, you know.
What's going on on the first Tuesday?
The first Tuesday of the month?
It's too close to...
Is the day after the council meeting.
That'd be tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's too close to...
It's too close for...
Yeah, because then I've got a way to hold, well, so then we would have a council meeting Monday, finance and personnel meeting Tuesday.
You can't...
And then we'd go an entire month without paying any bills.
Okay. What about the fourth Tuesday?
What time are the board meetings?
Too close to the council meeting.
Six o'clock.
Can we do earlier on Tuesdays, like?
Yeah, if we did it earlier on Tuesdays, but, but there are a lot of people here, they can't get off work to get earlier, so.
Do we do the third Tuesday, not the second?
No, it is the first Tuesday.
It is the third Tuesday?
Second, the second Tuesday is too close?
Too close. You're going a whole month without approving bills, then.
How about the second, or the, the, uh, well, in June, it would be the sixteenth, would be a Thursday.
Well, what if we moved to the second Tuesday, because, I mean, we used to pay the bills once a month anyway.
Yeah.
I, I'm just trying to make it work.
Yeah.
It's, it is easier this way.
Sure, I get it.
I don't, I don't have to pay the bills, the ladies do, so. One of them being in the cable room and one of them being out here, I don't want to speak for them, but. I mean, we used to pay the bills once a month, and that was it, after full council, we never did a pre-month requisite.
So the only thing?
It's an option.
The second Tuesday of the month is the RDA meets at six o'clock.
Uh, what if we just headed la- later on the third Tuesday? I mean, typically, I'm done, you know, if we did more like a seven-thirty, which is later, but I, I would be back always by that time, but...
There's no Mondays available?
Depends on how you look at it, I guess.
What's, what's?
The third Monday of the month is stacked.
It's stacked with library, parks.
Well, parks we can move if we have to.
CDC.
CDC. So you've got three meetings all within roughly two hours.
The CDC, John, that's at the county level too, right? You meet with all the county staff throughout the whole county, it's not just, correct?
Oh, no, uh, the CDC is our city's version of KCEDC.
I apologize.
Where are your meetings?
In Kewaunee. Usually, Kewaunee County meetings are in the morning, it's just the executive, the, the main, the main one of the whole county board happens to be the third Tuesday night.
What are Thursdays?
That's, uh...
Third Thursday?
And it doesn't work for Casey.
That doesn't work for Casey.
I can't do that stuff.
I mean, if it ultimately had to be Thursday, I can never guarantee that I'm going to make it. I mean, I can do what I can, but Thursday is, as far as days go, from basically the moment I wake up until the moment I get, get back, I'm busy. And, I mean, if, if it has to accommodate that, I'm just saying I can't guarantee anything.
Would it help if it was later in the day?
No, I mean, no, because it's, it's a, a full day. I mean, any other day I can, I can accommodate, uh, in almost any other time, but...
How about a Friday morning?
I can't have classes. How about Wednesday at seven at night? I could do Wednesday.
Which, on the third Wednesday or?
Whatever Wednesday you want, I could do after seven. Does that work for you, Casey, Wednesday?
Yeah, the, the third Wednesday is fine, because we just did the last Wednesday.
Third, the third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday at seven, I, we can do that, I could do that.
Yeah.
Except if you got hauled into something, right?
Well, then I just don't show up.
Okay.
Because I work till seven.
All right.
Okay, so, the third, third Wednesday of every month at, at seven?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, does that work for everybody, or try to, and if, and if that doesn't work, we can try to change it at a later point and say, hey, that's not going to work.
So are we just making a motion to move the next meeting?
The, all, that's, and to have that, the default meeting date is always going to be the third at the seven, seven o'clock. And then, if that doesn't work, we can change...
So we move the seventeenth to seven o'clock on Thursday the eighteenth.
The eight, Wednesday, Wednesday the eighteenth is what we just said, right?
May, May seventeenth was our, was, was our schedule.
Yep, Tuesday.
And we're going to move it to Wednesday the eighteenth.
The next day.
At seven o'clock.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Do you need a motion to make that change? Okay, would somebody make that motion?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Kevin, okay. Okay, Leah, did the, Leah, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, um, that motion is approved. Okay. Um, then, um, comments on the El Goma Fire and Rescue staffing concerns? Is there any comments we're going to make on that? Hearing none. Okay, update on the sale of the long-term care.
Pledge of Order, I mean, that's, it's not, I mean, there's a whole, the conversation over the compensation is the discussion over what, what Amber has put together. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we should have, I mean, it's, this necessitates it.
About the fire, Fire and Rescue?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, the entirety of it.
Yeah, okay.
Is a discussion.
Yeah, we, yeah, back up just a moment to Casey's point. Um, everybody having the opportunity to review the attachment that was provided, the memo. That's part of the, part of the packet. Um, our last finance personnel meeting, it was brought to discussion that there's some, some very valid concerns regarding the EMS and fire department and wages. And at that time, Chief Ackerman had provided the council or the finance committee ample details regarding the surrounding areas, both Kewaunee and Luxembourg, and where they were at with their EMS for their drivers and on-call staff. Um, it was significantly more than what we are currently paying. Um, and at that time, there was, uh, there was some good discussion brought forth, I thought, as a body, that we really need to take a look at this. Um, I had, I had asked that our treasurer look into and provide us with an update. If we were in fact going to do something, what the net difference was going to be, and also where those monies could come from. Um, and, uh, so therefore, that leads us to the attachment, the attachment that was given regarding the EMS hourly rates. Um, there is a budget, uh, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two budget, um, currently that's estimated using twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars of the rescue fund balance, um, including the reserved amounts such as the EMS FAP funds. Um, without the, uh, changes, or if we were to go into there, it would put us in a deficit with the proposed changes of approximately forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, so per the treasurer's, um, memo that she had put out, it, it is her advice that she's requesting at this time that the council refer this back to the finance and personnel for further work. Um, and she had a couple of suggestions that were on here for possible future work, working with townships and, and looking at those negotiating contracts, which we had talked about. Um, and, and also putting in that new contract review for twenty-twenty-three, which I, I know it's, uh, seems like it's far, far away, but budgeting season is right around the corner. And then also, number two, explore and present alternatives to, uh, the proposed rates. So, all in all, it's a long-winded say, uh, way of saying that, um, it was advised that it go back to the finance personnel committee for our next meeting, which, uh, we just found out got moved to the seventeenth to the eighteenth. So, just to give the folks at home a little bit more context, because I know that you guys don't have this, and then also the members that are out in the audience today. I'd be happy to try to, thank you, Casey, for bringing that up. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, I want to apologize for not bringing it up. I talked to Tom Ackerman before the meeting, and he said we weren't going to discuss it here, so that's why I kind of moved on it. Okay. Okay.
All right, so that's, that's tabled, do we need a motion to table, or are we just going to?
We're just going to table it to finance.
Yeah, table to finance.
Update, the sale of the long-term, John, with you being on that committee, would you like to make comments on what's happening with the medical center?
Well, I mean, the update is that we've received a copy of the, um, asset purchase agreement and the operation transfer agreement. Um, it was discussed at our meeting. Uh, we have been doing our best to, um, operate along the guidelines since it's a signed contract at this point. Any other, I was about to say, we have the president of the...
I have something to say, because I sat in your meeting for an hour and a half, and I sit in all of those meetings and I say nothing. And that medical center board has lost its way. You people cannot, you are not neutral. Everything is negative. There was not one positive thing in that meeting for an hour and a half. Everything you say is, how can we screw the city, how can we screw Sam, or get lucky and do them both at the same time? It is so hard to watch you people talk in that meeting. Not one decision was made based on what's good for the medical center. It's, should the city be responsible, or should Sam be responsible, but we're not responsible. That's what happens in those meetings. It's disgusting to watch you, and you bring the biggest can of gas to that meeting. You need, the nursing home is sold, there's nothing you can do about it. You need to move along and help that nursing home stay here in El Goma after it's sold. That's your job, and I don't think you realize that. I don't think, John, that you can serve as an alderman and on that medical center board at the same time. I believe that with all my heart. You are not neutral, you are not unbiased. You people need to, to realize what you're doing there. You, you send out, I watched your medical center report this time, who said, uh, we have a door we're not going to fix because the board decided not to fix it. That's not what you said. You said, no way, we're not spending the money, let Sam spend his money on it. That's how them meetings work, and you guys need to stop that.
That was physically responsible.
You can't talk. That's exactly what you do to me in those meetings. If I even part my lips, you tell me to be quiet.
And I don't, I don't insult you either, which is what you're doing to the board.
I am not insulting you, I am telling you my opinion. My opinion is not an insult, it's my opinion, I'm entitled to it. Just like when you're in the meeting and you're entitled to your opinions, and your eyes roll and you negatively impact everybody that you can talk about.
I'm very offended by you, I'm sorry.
I don't care.
I, I know I'm speaking out of turn, but Jenny was at that meeting as well. I think she could attest to the decisions that we make that are in the best interest of the city.
Never one time did the nursing home ever even come up as to what's best for the nursing home. Every conversation is, how can we, the city should be responsible for this, we are this, they can't do this to us, we can't do... That's how the whole meeting goes.
Using the example you just gave, the election to not repair that, that door, it's an unused door for the nursing home. The expense would have come from the nursing home.
In the meeting, we're not fixing it, let Sam fix his own door.
That's right.
That is exactly what was said.
He said we need not fix it because it does not benefit the nursing home. You don't understand all of the nuances because you're not on the board and have known what we've done for, for years with that facility.
What I know is that you are not helping that nursing home by constantly being negative. Constantly, everything that happens there is negative, everything.
I'm sorry you see it that way.
I do see it that way.
I'm sorry you see it that way.
Well, I was at the, at the end of the meeting, we talked about having, there's a transition group that has nothing to do with the board that was going to meet and so, try to solve some of these issues because there's a lot of things in that contract that were wondering, what does that really mean? And I'm not a lawyer, and neither is anybody else on the committee, and we thought, you know, getting together and putting that committee in. I talked to, to Aaron about who was on that transition and how do we get it together and, and move forward. But there's a lot of stuff we got to move forward, and we got to do it sooner than later, but we also don't want to mess it up. We don't want to do something wrong and find out now we're on the hook for employer, you know, the issues where vacation pay, sick pay, and all that kind of stuff, we need to know the real answers behind this stuff. We just can't say as a board, do it. We really need to clear it up, so...
Even the PTO die comes up in there, and they want to know how to pay out the PTO time, and if they don't pay it out, Sam should have to do it. PTO is quite, is accrued while they work there. If somebody earned ten hours of PTO time, you better have the money somewhere to pay them. So if they don't take it before Sam buys it, why would you keep the money?
We wouldn't keep the money.
Then why did you say you would?
We didn't say that at all, you don't understand what we're talking about when we're in those meetings. We even give you the materials to show you what we would be paying out. We are trying to plan the amount that's there, so we don't go in the hole, and we can pay out what employees deserve to pay out.
Why is it a discussion whether or not Sam is going to give them PTO time?
Because Sam wanted the PTO in the agreement, and it wasn't put in per his wishes. For whatever reason, and I don't know why, however, I presented to him a possibility that because employees have not had a choice in any matters, why couldn't we give them just one small choice?
I heard that from you, and I applaud you for that. That was the only thing I heard in that meeting that you cared about, that people were at the facility.
That choice being that employees, A, have the choice of taking the payout from the nursing home, B, it would transfer all over to the new owner, of which the nursing home would pay for that cost.
That is not what was said in that meeting.
Or C, the employee would be allowed to say, I want forty hours paid out now, transfer forty, and we would be paying for that too.
So, let me ask you this, Jean, why would you pay them PTO time, why would you pay it out, if they stayed there? So then they can come back and say, Sam didn't give us any PTO time?
That's in your agreement that you guys agreed to.
It is not in the agreement. You just said it wasn't. It didn't get put in there because Sam didn't say.
The PTO, everything that we owe employees, if they've earned the PTO time, they are owed that PTO time.
I agree.
According to the agreement, we have to pay all of that out at the time of closing. That's what the contract says.
We picked this contract, we've gone sentence by sentence, and that's in there.
To make sure we're not violating this contract that we didn't have a part in making. So we have to plan to pay it out in some way, or work out something with the new owner so that they can have some carryover and have some vacation over the next year.
Okay, John, page fifteen.
On page thirteen of the operation transfer agreement, under ten C, here's what it states. "On or prior to the closing date, old operator shall pay its employees one hundred percent of the accrued vested and unvested but unpaid vacation obligations, one hundred percent of the vested and unvested sick and holiday pay and severance obligations, but specifically excluding any and all retirement benefits which may have accrued through the old operator's participation in the Wisconsin retirement system, which shall remain the responsibility and liability of the old operator. The pay, all other related payroll obligations, including, but not limited to, all FICA withholding, unemployment, workman's compensation, and other employment-related taxes, as well as any insurance premium obligations of old operator vested or unvested with respect to the retained employees that have accrued prior to the closing date or agreement." You'll notice that nowhere in that agreement do they mention paid time off, which is a more modern term. I find this to be archaic in nature, but the, the result of that is that something that we were not intending to pay, and that was vested, legacy vested vacation pay, we were not intending to pay when we converted to PTO, that was made clear. However, this agreement now holds us to that payment. That payment is in the amount of twenty...
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, something like that. Um, so that is, that is a unfortunate sequela of this particular agreement.
All I'm saying, did you guys go into that meeting, you included, you pick, you, you can't change the contract, but you pick on everything. I listened to you guys talk about the contract, uh, the one percent. Can you change that?
No.
You had a half-hour discussion about it.
No. We can't say, we are, this was the first...
You had a twenty-minute conversation about the copy machine.
This is the first opportunity the board had to actually go over both the purchase, purchase and the operating transfer agreement. You know, it starts with the, um, the council authorizing the sale of, to the number-one buyer is Sam Fulman of Cadenza Healthcare. And that is, you know, sort of what we were expecting to see, instead of the Fremont SNF Propco LLC without Sam's name listed, until you got partially through the agreement. Now, it's important that everyone on the medical board understand what is in this agreement in detail. So if you are complaining about the amount of time that was spent in that discussion, I'm sorry, but the board needed to know that. And part of the minutes that we sent and what was written into the record and read into the record were the obligation... were the obligations of the medical board as it has been established and what is, what is required to continue on, which is germane to this conversation. Now, the other part of that, if you, if you said, you said you read everything that I put out, then you will realize that under state law, the medical board has a very special place and responsibility.
I read it.
And if, you know, it's up to this body as to whether or not they wanna go ahead and dissolve the border or not. We have to make preparations for all of those payments that have been enumerated in the agreement. We are abiding by the agreement. That is what we have to abide by.
Why does it have to be so negative?
Why do we have to love it? I mean, it doesn't matter. It's the fact, the fact, let me finish what I'm saying. I have the floor.
Because you are turning the nursing home staff into people that don't wanna be there.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Without being interrupted? Now, you're claiming that I don't want to. I believe it's important that both the city and the medical center come out of this in good shape. That it is, you know, it has a good opportunity to succeed. But there are some issues that have to be addressed and have to be addressed kind of quickly. And, you know, if, if you think that I am not the person to be on there, that is, you're, you're entitled to that opinion. And if so, you might even ask the mayor to remove me from the transition team.
I did not do that, did I?
To, no, not yet, but, but if that is the way you feel and that is the way the rest of the council feels, then the mayor has the authority to remove me from the transition team.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are we better off turning the, whatever this is, the board into a committee? Where the council has a little more say, like I said before, and keeping the same people on it? And then the council's more involved. Steve can find out more of what's going on. I'll know more of what's going on. Then we all have more interest in this than the board deciding how to spend all this money and later on we get a bill like, by the way, we're not paying you for the parking lot. By the way, we're not buying this door. We're not doing that. Is that the avenue we should be going?
I wanna make it clear because you brought up money, it is not about the money. It is about keeping that nursing home here indefinitely.
We gotta keep it running. Right. That's my goal too, is to keep the people there.
And I don't feel like that's happening right now. I'm sorry. Keep your opinion.
No, no problem. So I'm asking, is that what we should be doing? I don't know. Cause I wanted to succeed.
I do too.
And if the certain people on the board have ulterior motives, not saying that they do, it might not succeed by what's I'm seeing happening and we're not be able to say anything.
I would feel comfortable having it moved to a committee with the council having more say.
Leah can't, can't hear.
I'm sorry, Leah, I didn't hear.
I said, I would feel more comfortable hav- having more input and saying, just know more, cause I don't know that much. So. I would, I would second that if it was emotional.
I don't know what the process is to do this. Erin, you'd have to come in.
It's in the business. It's an ordinance. We have to do an ordinance change to get rid of the, the medical center board. The administrator responds to the board, so that would be reworking the administrative agreement because that is all part of what's been going on. You have how many months yet where the city owns it? You're gonna go through a lot. If you want, minute by minute, we'll record these and you can re-hear them. I mean, what we're doing is we're looking at existing contracts that we are obligated to pay for and trying to figure out how we can get the city out of them because the contract says they will not take them.
It's over thirty thousand dollars.
I mean, there are lots of little things. There are other areas where we believe the contract puts a liability on the city that we're trying to avoid. I think you people are thinking of us as an us versus them. That's not what it is.
You are an us versus them. How many times has Jean said in the meeting, if this happens, I'm leaving.
We have worked in the best interest of this facility. Excuse me.
That'll go those people.
She has that right.
I won't work for the city council. I won't.
It will, when you think of adding all of you into a mix in an un, you know, whatever, then I don't know who leaves this committee. I don't know, and frankly, I don't know that people will serve. We're doing this as volunteers. We don't even get a council payment and we've been doing this for years. Okay, if someone wants to assume the responsibility and take over the day-to-day operational monitoring, because that's what we do, Steve. We do more than this contract. We're monitoring how things are going, how the staffing level is, what we need to do to get more staff, how to keep this thing going.
If I might. In your, in your, in your talk, talk very early on, you know, not, not just this little bit. You mentioned a bunch of contracts that as a city, we know absolutely nothing about. Yet I can sit here and I can tell you that every single department, the library, the utility, Gus's fire department, Matt's public works department, we know about every single contract that has ever been let or written.
I don't think you do for the utility.
And yet you are... Huh?
I don't think you do for the utility because this operates the same way the utility does.
We sure, we sure do. We sure do because they provide us with those details on a monthly basis. We see those details. Yet all of a sudden, now we've got a whole host of, 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 I, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
I understand what you're saying, but we have...
But we've got a whole host of contracts that the eight people plus the mayor sitting up here have no idea.
And this is why we should have been involved in the early discussions to help you understand.
No, this is why we should have been involved a lot more in all of the details that are going on within your organization. It's not, it's not you should have been involved. It's we should have been involved deeper with your...
We have, you have representation of the mayor and an alderperson for as long as this facility has operated under the ordinance, Jake.
Well, no, and, and I understand that, but that's always been one of my issues is that the, the financial disclosures that are available to us are, are third, fourth rate. All right, no, Jean, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I get what you're...
Now, you, you sit down and look at what Nancy cranks out for the utilities. What Amber cranks out for the financials on a monthly basis, for the public works, for the police department, for the fire department. And you compare them to snippet that we get of your financial status on a monthly basis. I couldn't run my personal household with that kind of information.
Are you talking about the financial reports that are in the packet every month?
There, there are no financial reports. There are, believe me, there are, there are none.
Yes, there are. They go to the financial, in the packet.
They're in the packet.
They're in the board member packet. They don't go to, the council is a summary.
Oh gee whiz.
It's always the...
But we get to, we get to see utilities entire financials. We get to see Matt's entire financials. We get to see Randy's entire financials. We get to see Gus's entire financials. We get to see the library's entire financials. But the medical center is very special. All we get is a little snapshot that we can't, we have no idea where you are, where you're spending money, who you're contracted with. And that disturbs me. And that's, that's the businessman in me.
Yeah, I guess what I would say, Jake, is the medical center is a municipal corporation. And as a municipal corporation, it acted as that municipal corporation apart from the city. That's what I was told when I came on the board fifteen years ago on and off. That's how it operated.
Yes, and, and yes, and there's, and the utilities has independence, but they still provide that information to ultimately the oversight board for all enterprise businesses that the city of Algoma runs. And you are one of those enterprise businesses.
The, the utility and us are the two enterprise. That's what I've always been told.
Well, and Maria is, is teetering.
Maybe please just talk back to the operation transfer agreement and the confusion that exists on this agreement. There are so many parts of it. For example, Fremont, F R E M O N T, Opco LLC.
Okay.
And then, and...
I, 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 I wanna stop you right now because, because John and I had this conversation yesterday. And there is, there is a business adage when you are doing business with people that whatever somebody you're dealing with, Jean, if I'm dealing with you on a private side, I'm buying something for you. I could care less what you have structured for, between you, God and the IRS and whatever you call it. As long as when that check comes to me, when we have an agreement, that check clears the bank and we transfer the deed. It doesn't matter whether there's Fremont LLC. He may be creating three or four more of those.
And I don't care about that, but when we come down to the definition of the old operator versus the facility and the clarifications that happen throughout the contract that we really do need to iron out. There are some areas in here that are really unclear and I'm hoping that the transition team can address those and deal with them.
Okay. Might, might I make, might I make, might I make a suggestion to you?
There are other aspects if I may. Could I finish? There are other aspects that the city is gonna be on the hook for and I see it and I understand it. And there's, it's partly because we offered to sit down with the city attorney and say, hey, look, this is what's gonna happen if this is there. For example, if I may, the Wisconsin Medicaid system often goes into a retroactive payment, a, a pay increase or decrease. Should it be a decrease a year and a half from now, they will come back to the city for that amount of money. It's in the contract. All monies, so we are hustling like crazy right now to collect every penny we can for the city. Because any monies paid after July first, whether they belong to the Algoma operation or not, go to them automatic. And this is that kinda stuff. This is what we're concerned about.
Again, I, I have read the contract. It is very, very typical of business-to-business contracts. There's nothing mystical, nothing magical about anything in that contract that, and if you are having problems understanding it, Erin or Amber will connect you directly with Jim Downey. I would suggest that you write a page number and a paragraph number on there and he will explain it to you. You don't need to scratch your head. These things are very straightforward. There's a lot of verbiage in there that is iron, is, is boilerplate, right? That's the term. Because that's the nature of the agreements. But I have gone, I went through the draft. I went through the, I went through the signed version of it. It is very, very straightforward. It is a very clean contract. And I think you are, and I think you are, 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 are focusing on areas that if you are questioning how it's worded or what, what it particularly means and you don't be banging your head against the wall. We have a legal, we have legal people to help you understand that. And don't do this. That's not, that's not fair to me. I'm trying to give you some advice to help you understand the contract.
I don't think Downey understands the business itself. And if he just would have sat down and talked to us before him.
Okay, yeah, all right. It's a myth, it's a mythical, it's a mythical business that requires unicorns and shit.
I wanna know why you guys are fighting us on changing this to a committee. Why is this so hard? Why are you fighting us?
Actually, part of it is because the, in fact, we made an adjustment to our bylaws last, in two thousand eighteen. Because the state has us operating as a non, as, as, we're following the state guidelines for what reports and how we have to report into the state. For example, we added that Jean is the CEO, the administrator, not Jean in particular, but some specific language. It's in the minutes, minutes, so you can read it. That, that was at the request of the state as the requirement of language for the state. So we do not want to upset our licensing board either because they are the central people. They're the ones that, that will then continue through for the new operators to be able to use some of these. Cause they'll be using the Medicare number. We, we found all this enough. It's all new to us for transferring a, a bill, a, a business like this. Cause it's different than a different business.
So when your administrator just told me in a public meeting that she will not work for the city if we make it a committee.
I don't want to work for you guys.
Now that makes me wonder, are you really gonna be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers of Algoma with the stuff that the medical board owes the city? As in the parking lot loan, as in taking care of the residents, as in wanting to make this place succeed? Now I, you can see that I'm concerned.
I think that that's demeaning, Kevin. I am a citizen of Algoma. I've been here for close to forty years.
Well, your administrator just told me this, so now I'm like, we maybe should dissolve this.
I don't wanna have to work with someone like that. I don't wanna be arrogant every time I turn around. And I'm sorry.
That's, that's rude.
No, no, this, this, as, as president of the council, I'm gonna ask that this ends. We need to move on. I just wanna make one comment. We've talked about this in the past, several meetings. Um, and everybody up here, you guys in the audience as well, we need and we want to make, make this go, right? We want to make this as easy of a transition as possible. We want what's best for the citizens, the people that are there, the residents and the employees. Changing it from a committee to, dissolving the medical board, changing it to a committee, it was something that was briefly discussed. Um, I will not support that. I, I think, given the timing and the ordinance changes and everything that needs to happen, it's, it's, it's just not realistic, okay? However, that being said, I, I, I would hope, I mean, with Steve's comments that he made, um, getting back to, uh, making this a smooth transition, that, that's, that's on both parties, right? That's on us and on you guys as a board. Um, we want the, the, at the end of the day, taking care of the residents is what we want. And making sure that the employees there, okay, on, and we're looking to you guys as, as the board and the transition team to make sure that the employees are, they fully understand and it's not just one side. There's three sides every story, right? Um, last time that this was brought up, it was strictly based on two things. More communication, more transparency. So as, as a council, that's what our ask is. As the board, it, it, it takes two. The road goes both ways. I just, that's all I gotta say. I, I, if, if it's okay with council, I would love to move forward. Kevin, is there...
Well, when you wanted money, I voted for you guys to get whatever money you needed to get this thing operating and keep you operating. I hope you guys really look out for the city like you're saying you are.
We've been paying you. We've already brought it down almost two hundred dollars.
That's immaterial.
Again.
Doesn't matter. I'm just saying, we borrowed you money when you needed it because we thought you could do the job. Now I would appreciate you do the same thing for the city when you're looking at closing this thing out. Cause there's lots of money left over.
Well, we have a transition team. What we need to do is get together outside of here, sit down with the board and the transition team and iron these things out. Arguing here on TV does no good for anyone, so I agree that we need to move on with this.
I can just, can I ask in the, in the hope of more transparency, could, for the rest of the time, could you guys show up to finance and personnel and give us a report personally? Would that be doable?
It would be when it is, because I work full-time as well.
That's fine. I do too. I come to these meetings, so I, I, that would make me feel better. If you guys could come to finance and personnel meetings and give us a full report. Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, move, move on?
Yes. I apologize.
Apologies needed. Go ahead.
The next, the next one is resolutions and we'll turn that over to Erin.
All right. So the first resolution that we have tonight is a res- resolution eleven eighteen dash twenty twenty-two. It is a resolution authorizing the mayor, clerk or treasurer to submit applications and annual reports for the DNR recycling grant program. Did everybody get a chance to review it? Does anybody have any questions?
You need to move to accepted.
Okay, Steve, you're accepted. Is there a second?
Second.
Leah, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that is accepted. Then we move on to the next resolution.
All right. So we have resolution eleven nineteen dash twenty twenty-two. This resolution is a resolution setting May fourteenth, twenty twenty-two as World Migratory Bird Day in the city of Algoma. Did everybody get a chance to review it? Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Look for a motion in a second, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that is passed. Okay, next resolution.
Getting there, hang on. Okay, the next resolution is a resu- is a resolution eleven twenty dash twenty twenty-two. This is the resolution amending certain pay ranges for the city of Algoma. Did everybody get a chance to remo- review this one? Does anybody have any questions?
So for your police officer, how long is their probationary period for hard-time officers, Randy?
Typically, it's how that works is while they're training, it's they're paid fifty dollars an hour, then once they start, we bump them to their full time. then once they start, we bump them to their full-time range.
Oh, okay. Which is eighteen seventy-seven.
That's, that's where their range starts.
We try to keep it in line with the other cities because we share them between Luxembourg and Kewaunee PDs.
So your rate, your, your hourly rate with shared part-time will match Luxembourg and Kewaunee?
Correct.
Isn't Luxembourg and Kewaunee a twenty bucks an hour once you're trained?
Yes.
This is the range.
That's the range.
So we're just doing a range? Who determines the range then at the end? Like you do?
Part of it. Based on budget?
Um, did you see on the back of that resolution, there's a, there's a paragraph at the bottom about the ranges, about the minimums and the maximums, what sets that? Anybody else have any questions?
What it did, they, this change then is a CPI?
Yes.
And the CPI amount was what percent? Amber?
Seven.
Six point four. Six point four, I believe is the number.
Six point four.
Okay, so we aren't changing the CPIs. That's staying the same. It was six point four for this last year. That's not what everybody got, that's what the pay scale's adjusted by. The scales themselves were originally set up on an eleven-step scale. And about two years ago, you guys took out the steps and just went from the minimum to the maximum. So we didn't change any of that for the full-time employees and some of the part-time. What we needed to change was for like the lawn mowers in the cemetery, some of the marina workers. We're struggling to get the part-time help. We've got QuickTrip paying fifteen dollars an hour, Target paying twenty dollars an hour, so we're competing with those people nearby. In the budget process, we had budgeted at an average of about fifteen dollars per hour. Now, that doesn't mean that's what everyone's going to get, but that's what we use for an average to determine what to put in for the budget. If we were to pay someone fifteen dollars an hour, there were a few of those part-time scales where they would not have been within the minimum and maximum range. So we had to make sure we adjusted those ranges to account for if we were to give someone fifteen dollars an hour. Or a little more if that's what we need to do to get someone in. Okay? The other thing we did add was the probationary police officer. So that part-time police officer scale was in place prior to the coordination with the other communities. Now that we coordinate with the other communities, they start at fifteen. After they're done with their probationary period, I think they go to twenty. So what we did is we put in an extra line and called it probationary and started them at fifteen. We kept the scale for the part-time the same as it's always been because twenty falls within that range. Does that help?
The parking rep director manager in our ad, the top page is forty-seven. How come we have sixty-four on here?
Because we start at the bottom and go to the mid.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all we did for that line, all we changed there was we added the word manager instead of just director. So in the future, if you ever decided you wanted to go back to director, you won't have to make any other changes. You still have the top end of the scale for director.
Thank you for the explanation, Amber. You looking for a motion to approve this?
Yes, we are.
I will make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it passes. Then the temporary Class B license.
Yep, so there were two temporary Class B slash Class B retailers' licenses that have been applied for. Um, one of them is for Algoma Youth Baseball, so for the months of May, June and July. Um, there's probably thirty dates. Um, so rather than list them here, I kind of just do a license for May, a license for June and a license for July that specifies their dates. Um, and the other one was for Compu- Community Improvement of Algoma for Shani Days and Wet Whistle Wine Fest. So I'm looking for council approval to issue and grant those licenses.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the item G, Temp Class Retailers License.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Okay, premises amendment for the Von Seal Winery.
Um, another part of the, um, alcohol liquor licensing program is that every license has to have a premise description. That says where you very clearly can and cannot serve alcohol. Um, in order for, um, the applicant that we have here, Von Seal Winery, to be able to utilize the now-vacated tap room, which used to be Annabie Brewery, to sell their ciders, they would have to amend their liquor license to include that specific area. So that's what you have before you tonight is authorizing me to amend the li- the license to update the, the, um, premise description.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it passes. Okay, the next thing is mayor appointments. Uh, when it came time for me to, um, set up the committees, I did contact the people whose terms were up and asked them if they wanted to stay on. The people that wanted to stay on, I left them on. I did not unseat anyone. And the people that did not want to come on, I tried to get ahold of the other people that were on the committee and say, give me some names. So hopefully, all the appointments meet everybody's expectations on it and there are no problems with any of them. Okay. Then we move on to adminis- administration.
So typically, um, we've always had an administrator's report, and previously that was Jared. He had just given updates on what was going on. So to keep everybody informed, Amber and I put something together, and I'll just go through it for you guys briefly here. Um, an update on redevelopment area number two. The relocation payments have been calculated, and Peter, who's a relocation specialist, and Howard, who is an acquisition specialist, have begun talking with the tenants and property owners. So far, one family has used their relocation payment to purchase a home as allowed under the program rules. The requests for redevelopment proposals have been sent out. The deadline for returning the proposals was April 29th, 2022. Two companies responded that they were interested in receiving the proposal request. Many others responded that they were too busy, the project was too small, and gave other various reasons. The next RDA meeting is going to be Tuesday, May 10th. Um, we already touched on the long-term care unit, um, but the agreements have been signed and the 1.5 million dollars for the purchase has been deposited into an escrow account. Um, cable, taping of the finance and personnel meetings. As discussed at our last finance and personnel meeting, um, the public works crew was able to move the camera, and the full council will now be able to be shown with the camera zoomed out all the way. Um, L. Reinhardt will be taping the finance and personnel meetings. Um, the finance and personnel meetings will not be aired live like the council meetings, but they will be aired on the cable channel and our YouTube channel at a later date. The 2022 Street and Utility Project. The 2022 project will be taking place starting the week of May 16th or the 23rd with substantial completion expected by August 5th. The project is taking place on Third Street and happening in two phases. The first phase will be on Steel Street to Clark Street, and the second phase will be from Steel Street to Navarino. Garbage and recycling will continue to take place as normal during construction. Speaking of garbage and recycling, there was a misprint on the calendar that is online and that went out with the tax bills. Garbage and recycling will be collected tomorrow, Tuesday, May 3rd, as normal. Um, please review the summer, or the calendar closely with summer holidays approaching. The collection that takes place the week of Memorial Day will be collected on Wednesday, June 1st. Um, Memorial Day, there will be a Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 30th at 10:00 a.m. with a service to follow at Legion Park. Does anybody have any questions or need anything?
Madam Mayor, can I have a floor for just a moment? Um, as acting president of the council, I think that it's appropriate, and I'd just like to take the opportunity to publicly, uh, thank our previous mayor, Wayne Schmidt. Um, having the opportunity to work with him for the last four years, um, he has definitely opened my eyes to a lot of things that we do behind the scenes as a city. There's a lot of things that are happening and a lot of good things that he's done. So I'd like to take the opportunity on behalf of the council to, to publicly thank him for all of the work and dedication that he has given the city of Algoma. Um, and on that same token, I also want to take the opportunity to publicly congratulate Mayor Hasky in her bid for mayor. And I also look forward to, uh, personally working with her as, as the president of the council and, and I know that the rest of the council feels the same as well. So thank you to Wayne and also congratulations to you. Thank you.
Jenda, items for next meeting? You just want those to get to you by a certain date?
Yep.
Okay, do you have a date that we need to do?
I'll, I'll send out an email.
Okay, okay. And our, our next meeting will be on June, June 6th at 6:00 p.m. here in City Hall. Okay.
I do have one more quick thing.
Okay.
Kathy Pavick, if you see her in the audience? Could you just give a brief when the, um, bird city is down at the youth club? What, what day is that?
Sure, it is May 14th, and at the youth club, this is, um...
Hang on, one second.
Here, one second.
World Migratory Bird Day celebration in Algoma is May 14th at the youth club from nine to two. We have a great lineup of speakers to highlight what the nature viewing possibilities are in the city of Algoma, how to improve habitat in Algoma, and then to meet some live birds from Open Door Bird Sanctuary. Think it's going to be a great day for people of all ages. This is a free community event, and this is our committee's work to fulfill the requirement to be a bird city, Wisconsin. We do this every year to earn that recognition for the city. So I hope you all stop in sometime that day.
And what day is it again?
That is Saturday, May 14th.
At the youth club?
Yes, thanks a lot, Erin.
The next item is to go into closed session. All right, we, we need a motion to go in in a second.
Thank you.
Steve made a motion, okay?
I'll second.
Okay, Scott, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we will go into closed session.